God, we thank you for this church, for this people, for the work you're doing and continue to do. And we just pray earnestly that you would put our minds and hearts at peace, that you are in control, that you're reigning now from your throne, and that all things are working according to your will for the good of those who love you. And so, we thank you for inviting us into your family, that we might be partakers of this joy and peace. To be present here, we pray in Jesus's name, amen. Okay, you may have noticed that I'm joined by a guest today. He's very nervous, so we'll have to give him a round of applause. This is my grandfather, my dad's dad, Dan Bostrom, former city council president, Ward 6, St. Paul. Did I get that right? So, I have some interview questions for him. Some of them I know the answer to, some of them I don't. So, this is fun, I'm recording this as well. So, I have this, but also be able to share it with all of you and maybe other people that couldn't be here this morning. We could be able to share it with them. So, who are you? I had it written, "Who do you think you are?", but I changed it last. Who are you? Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I don't know how to start. I'll start by saying, I grew up in a middle-class neighborhood.
It's true.
Well, thank you, thank you, Luke. It's really a delight to be here. I've been out of this business of public speaking for quite a while. And pardon me if I kind of stumbled a little bit as we get going. And also, I noticed that he's got a camera rolling, so be very careful about what I say, because you never know, you're liable to find a clip that comes back to bite in five or six years for something interesting. So, we'll try to do that. Otherwise, you can edit it out if it gets...
It's in my own interest that you look good this morning, so don't worry.
Well, thanks, Luke, excuse me, for the invitation to be here. You know, I've got just a little bit of a connection that goes back to real life. Or to New Life. I live part-time in a console called Real Life. So, it's confusing. But anyway, years ago, my late wife Rosie worked at Northwestern. It was Northwestern College in those days and Northwestern University today. And she worked with a fellow out there who was the head of the music department. And the fellow that was the head of the music department, and I don't remember his name anymore, had a wife who played the harp. And she was a teacher here at New Life. So, some of you may remember...
Dick and Dottie Anthony.
Dick and Dottie Anthony. Absolutely, thank you so much. And Dottie played the harp, and she was just absolutely spectacular. And Dick was the head of the music department out there at Northwestern. So, we got to know those folks very, very well. And that was the first I'd ever heard of this place, until Luke came along and then refreshed my memory and got married here. So, we attended his wedding. You know, I grew up in St. Paul. My dad was an immigrant from Sweden and got here when he was 18 years old and didn't speak a word of English. And wound up going to the Evangelical Free Church on Payne Avenue in St. Paul. And the reason he went there, it was the Swedish Evangelical Free Church. And they did the morning services in Swedish. Well, as the neighborhood changed, they had to go to English part of the time. And then, as they went to English, another young lady started attending. Well, anyways, my dad got better with the language. He met this young lady who turned out to be my mother. And we wound up on the east side of St. Paul. Basically, I lived in zip code 55106 for my entire life. And as time went on in the neighborhood, and we moved a couple of times, Luke's folks bought a house right next door to us on East Shore Drive by Lake Phelan. So, Luke and his brother and sister and parents grew up right next door to us. So, we've got some really fond memories and some great stories.
Let's keep it moving.
Just one quickie. I was in charge of watching him one afternoon. And he and his brother and sisters are mischievous kids. And my wife had a wooden spoon that she would keep handy in case she needed to tap that to get their attention. Well, they were slightly out of control, so I took the wooden spoon and I whacked that thing on the countertop, and the thing broke. And Luke says, "Grandpa, now you're really in trouble. You broke Grandma's favorite spoon."
When he picked it up, she said, "Now, Dan, don't you break my spoon." So, I remember that part too. And he whacked it just as a threat. And sure enough, the top came right off. So, he deferred all of the anger towards him. I appreciate that.
But the room quietened down. Well, you're here to talk about politics. And one of the things I've learned over the years, when you go out and you meet new people and you get involved in different groups and you really aren't too sure who they are, two suggestions. Don't talk about religion and don't talk about politics. Okay? So, here we are, talking about the two things we aren't supposed to talk about if you want to make friends and keep them. I got involved as a young fellow and basically started out because... I'm gonna have to open up this...
Here, I'll get it for you.
Thanks. When I first was teaching semi-school over at First Free Foil, and as the kids started getting older, we started getting involved in PTA. And that really kind of started the whole thing as I got involved in PTAs. My kids were little, growing up. And I also wound up on the St. Paul Police Department. And I spent 26 years with the St. Paul Police Department. And in a million years, there was no family history, nothing. No one in our family that ever had anything to do with law enforcement. And I was working in retail sales in downtown St. Paul at the old Emporium Department Store, for those of you that remember the history of downtown St. Paul. And there was an off-duty police officer that used to work there from time to time and walk the floor for security reasons. And he would stop by and would chat. And one time, he said, "You know, young man, I think you'd make a good police officer. Really." I said, "I've never thought of it in my life." "No, you should think about that." Well, he left, and I didn't think about it. And a couple of months later, he came by again. And he said, "You know, young man, they just posted a test for the St. Paul Police Department, and I think you should take that test. And if you do, I'd be willing to kind of mentor you along a little bit." So, the upshot was is that I did take the test and passed it. As I was preparing to leave the Emporium, the next step in my life at St. Paul Police Department, I had an interview with the Personnel Office up there. And as I was talking with the lady in the Personnel Office, she said to me, she said, "Danny, are you sure you want to do this?" I said, "Well, I think so. It sounds like a good idea. You can help people and maybe do some good things." And all of a sudden, the tears started running down her eyes. And she said, "My son was a St. Paul police officer. He and his partner were parked in their squad car over on Concord on the west side of St. Paul. And a stolen car was being chased and coming north on Concord and ran head-on into my son's parked squad car. His partner was killed, and my son has never been the same since. Lost his ability to walk, his ability to communicate." And the tears just came down her face. And I have never forgotten that. Didn't dissuade me from leaving there and moving on, but I could tell how touched these people are and what this means in their life. And that kind of got me started. And as a young dad, kids in school, PTA, just that was my separation from the police department. Because you see so many bad things that you need something to remind you that there really are a lot of decent, caring people out there. And it kind of started in that direction. And that's what got me headed towards politics and the Board of Education. But little story. Anything you wanted to ask me?
No, I think that's good background information. So, 26 years as a police officer. And then, about what year was it that you first ran for your city council position? Or was there something before that even?
Oh, yeah, there was. A long history. I'm sorry, I really gotta scratch and throw here this way. When I was a young cop, there were some folks in the neighborhood from the PTA group that told me that there was going to be an opening for the state legislature in our legislative district. And they thought, "Maybe I should consider running for that." And, well, the upshot was as they talked me into it. I did, I ran, and I lost by, I don't know, 1,500 votes or something like that. And I was pretty sure that that probably wasn't my calling. Well, then, I got invited to participate in a political campaign for a guy who was running for mayor in St. Paul. And again, some of you old timers may remember this, Charlie McCarty. I see some nodding. And Rosalie Butler was a member of that group back in those days. So, anyway, I helped a little bit with this campaign. And as it got closer to the election day and a little more intense and got to know this candidate a little bit better. But I'm still doing my police work at the time. And we got a call one night. And a squad was requested to help with the delivery of a baby, because in those days, the St. Paul Police Department used to do all the medical emergency transportation. So, the squad went over to see if they could help with this delivery. And all of a sudden, we heard over the area, "Help, help, help, my partner's been shot." Well, I, along with the fellow who was working with my partner, Jerry Dexter, were only about a half a mile from where this call was about from Sylvie Avenue. And we hustled over there and got there. And here's one of our police officers laying on the ground. And I'd seen enough of this in my years of working and handling these kinds of calls, that this poor soul was mortally wounded. And this was a young man that worked for me, that I had sent out on patrol not more than two hours before this happened. He was young, his name was Jim Sackett. And yes, a lot of you still remember that from back in... It was 1970 when that all happened. And while this mayor oral campaign was going on, and later on, or a day later, I got a call from this mayor's campaign committee asking me if I would come down and interview, because they had a position. And I didn't know what this was all about. Well, it turns out that the mayor's office always gets a St. Paul police officer assigned to their office. And along with other duties, you drive the mayor to his special events and provide security for them. The mayor's office, the city council offices, and all of those things. And that was my introduction to politics and being invited into that. And then, for two years that Charlie McCarty was mayor, I sat through every city council meeting, and they met four days a week. And the county board meeting, because they met on the fifth day of the week. So, I saw a lot of political gymnastics during those years. But one of the things, I think the biggest takeaway from all of that stuff is is in watching people try to be cute and come up with one-liners and take a shot at one of their colleagues, is sometimes the best said thoughts are unsaid. And a friend of mine used the expression, "Keep your words sweet, someday you may have to eat them." And I've been in that position where I've had to eat them on many occasions. But again, I found that civility when you're dealing with colleagues, because on a board like a Board of Education, seven people. A city council, seven people. A county commission, is seven people. You can't do anything unless you can count to four. Four becomes the magic number. And in that particular venue, you can generally get to three fairly easily. But boy, I'll tell you, to get to that fourth one sometime is really, really a problem. And that's where you have to work with your colleagues. And even though you disagree, you can't really be disagreeable, you can't be nasty. And you have to... And once in a while, to get that fourth vote, you wind up having to swallow really hard and vote for something that you aren't particularly excited about. Not something that goes against every moral fiber in your body, but there are things that you really don't think are... Excuse me, are the greatest idea in the world. But you have the greatest idea in the world, and you need that person's vote to get there. So, you have to do what you have to do if you're going to accomplish it. One of the guys that I worked with down there, Dave Thon, was in and out for years. And Dave was a real character. And he was from the west end. And he was usually way off on the left on some issue or another. I was considered way off on the right. But when critical things would come down and the two of us could get together, we could usually find some kind of a meeting where one of us wound up as the fourth vote for the other one. And it was that type of back-and-forth action that you had to have if you were going to be successful.
Week one, we did some definitions of what we're talking about. And so, we needed to define government, the word, and politics. And if you remember, politics was defined as "the art or science of governing people." And I said, "I lean heavily towards the art side of that." And so, just hearing him share how some of that works, it is a bit more of an art, wouldn't you say? Because you're dealing with people. A science makes me think, "I have numbers, I have predictability, I have a hypothesis, I can test it, and then I can move on based on, you know, whatever the empirical evidence is." But when you're dealing with people, like you said, it's more of an art. Would you agree with that?
Oh, absolutely. And again, keeping a civil relationship with your colleagues. When Norm Coleman was elected mayor, I was, I guess, well, I had retired from the police department by that time and worked on his campaign a little bit. And he was mayor, and he was the one actually that encouraged me to run for the city council. So, he had had two years into the job when I first started on the city council. And I hadn't been there about a very short period of time. And there were some dreamers that came up with the idea, "You know, it would really be nice to bring professional hockey back to St. Paul." Well, and I didn't... St. Paul had a minor-league hockey team, the St. Paul Fighting Saints or the Minnesota Moose, whatever they were called back in those days. But they were the local scrappers on the ice. And we had the old Civic Center auditorium down there, the old drum down there. As a matter of fact, that drum was built when I was in Charlie McCarty's office. Anyway, so it was still there in the middle 70s, or 80s and 90s. And when this discussion of a hockey team came along, they said, "Well, they can't play in a place like this. This is a dump." And I thought, "Hey, wait a minute, this is pretty nice to play." I built this. You know, it doesn't meet today's standards. Well, the driving force behind the hockey team was a fellow by the name of Bob Nagley. And you remember Nagley Signs? Well, Bob Nagley was Nagley Signs. And they sold that thing out, and he evidently made a lot of money on the deal. And then, he bought another outfit called Roller Blades and made a huge hit out of that, and then sold that out. So, now he's sitting on a pretty good pile of cash. And he likes hockey. So, it was his idea to try and get an expansion team to the Twin Cities. And because he was friends with Norm Coleman, he thought, "Well, maybe we should try to get it in St. Paul." But Minneapolis has got, well, baseball, basketball, and football. So, we should get something. Well, the folks in Minneapolis thought, "If there's going to be a hockey team, it belongs in Minneapolis. Nobody's going to go to St. Paul to like hockey." Well, the powers that be...
It's your agent.
Who is scam likely? Anyway, there was quite a discussion and quite a battle over this, because getting a hockey team is one thing, but providing a place for, to actually play, was something else. And everything that went into this, and this is a combination where we had to work with our local government in St. Paul plus the state of Minnesota, because in order to pull this off, you had to be able to get bonding authority from the state of Minnesota to do this. And I watched some of this in action when Arnie Carlson was governor, and it was about 1:00 in the morning in the wee hours of legislative session. And it was a bonding bill that was up and the legislature was going to adjourn. And our ask was part of this, and there was a lot of resistance to it. The only good thing was is that Arnie Carlson was kind of a hockey guy. And he was interested in hockey. It got down to the point that it didn't look like the legislature was going to include this in their bill. And Arnie Carlson went down and spoke to the leadership of both houses. And nobody ever said exactly what he said. But I imagine it was something to the effect that if you don't include that hockey arena in there, you aren't going to get your bridge in Koochaching, you aren't going to get your park down in Wyona, and so on and so forth around the state. And you know what? All of a sudden, they saw the wisdom in the arena. But it was the ability of the governor to make deals and to make things happen. And as a result of it, the thing was funded. But then, there was a big to-do about how the city was going to handle the repayment of the finances. And I was president of the city council. And I was put in charge of rounding up the four votes to get this deal done. And I'm telling you, it wasn't pretty, because there were four council members that didn't want to do this. They didn't want to give Norm Coleman the credit for getting this done. That's what this was really boiled down to. Anyway, they came up with a worksheet as to what the city's ask was going to be, what we were going to be required to do and guaranteed to pay off these bonds that the state was going to issue. And again, I got up to three votes. And I knew two of the other folks were totally impossible to deal with. And there was one possibility. So, I talked to this lady. Her name was, you know, use her name, Bobby Miegar. And Bobby Miegar was from out in the Como Park area, a nice lady, and who I had known from my time on the Board of Education. So, I got to know her pretty well. And worked with her. But she wasn't really agreeable on a lot of things. But I went to her with the presentation that we had. And I said, "This is what the administration is proposing. And take a look at it and see if you can support it." So, it was probably five or six pages long. So, a day later, she came into my office. And I didn't know what to expect at that point. But she gave me the document back with a bunch of red lines here and there. And I said, "What's this all about?" She said, "These are the issues that I have concerns about. These are the things that I'd like to see done instead of that." And I go, "And one thing that I learned about politicians, you can't always trust their word." They'll tell you one thing, but you know, the next thing they'll say, "Well, you know, when we talked about that before, I didn't really know we were talking about this other thing. So, as a result of that, now I can support you." But I learned enough. When Bobby came in with that, and she presented it, and I looked at it, and I said, "Bobby, if I can get this done, will you support it?" And there was a pause and a... "Do you call?" "Yes." And I'm sure she felt in her heart of hearts that the administration wasn't going to buy it. Well, I got it, and I took it back to the mayor's office. And he and his chief of staff got it. And lady, "What's all this red stuff in there?" I said, "Well, those are the slight changes that we'll have to make if we want to get this done." And she looked at it, and, "Oh, we can't do this, and we can't do that. And I don't know how we could do that." I said, "Let me put this another way. If you don't support this, this deal isn't going to get done." And they said, "How do you know that she will support this even if we agree to it?" And I said, "She told me she would. And this is a woman of character and principle. And if she told me she would do it, she will do it." And they looked at it, and they still were mumbling and grumbling. And I said, "You know, here's the deal." And they said, "You know, Dan, I hate when you say, 'Here's the deal.' The deal is, this is the deal. If there's a T that isn't crossed or an I that is not dotted, this thing goes away." And they've got an excuse for it to go away, because it's not the document I submitted." And they ultimately swallowed it hard and said, "I guess we'll have to do it." And they did. Well, then, I had to go back to Bobby Miegar with this. And she was fully expecting that it was never going to be approved. And told her, "Bobby, they agreed to do it." And the blood ran out of her face. But she said, "Dan, I told you I'd support it. If you could get it done, you got it done. I'll support it." And that was the second part of this whole dance that brought The Wild to St. Paul. All these things go on behind the scenes, you never see them. But it's all built on relationships that you have with your colleagues. And you never know when one of those are going to be critically important.
Thank you for that story. One of my questions was, "What is your proudest accomplishment from your time in office?" Would you say getting The Wild and hockey back in St. Paul?
That was obviously very important. You know, I feel bad for the city of St. Paul today and what's happened to the downtown of St. Paul. downtown of St. Paul and so many vacant buildings down there. And I was out at Mancini's with my wife here a couple of weeks ago and we were coming back towards the east side where Coop is. And as we drove from Mancini's towards the XL Arena, there's quite a bit of activity on the street. But once we got to St. Peter Street and continued to head east, there wasn't a soul on the street or a sign of life anywhere. And I said to my wife, I said, this, this is really depressing. I don't know what is happening to our city. But the, if, if it wasn't for that XL Arena and the Wild, there would be nothing going on in downtown St. Paul today. I am, I'm convinced of that. But you know, there were a lot of other things that were, back in the, the mid 2000s, 2007 or '08, '09, when the real estate market crashed, remember when that happened? And people were walking away and there were foreclosures all over the place. We had one street there, Sims Avenue, and it was one block from Paint Avenue to Greenbrier. And on that block, there were 23 houses that lined the streets. So 10 on one side and I suppose 11 or 12 on the other. Anyway, of those 23 houses, 10 of them were vacant and abandoned. Oh yeah. Now, if, if you've got one block, a block and you got one house, you got a problem. But when you see something like this, what this says is the next thing you know, there's gonna be 11, 12 and 13. And at that point, that's when I really decided, we have to do something about this stuff. And we created an ordinance for dealing with vacant buildings. And what we did is we, we classified vacant buildings in category one, two or three. And the category one was, you sold your house, you bought another house, your house is in good shape and you move and it's, it doesn't need anything done to it. That's a category one. City doesn't really care about that. Then there's a category two, this is a house that needs a lot of work to be rehabbed. And the flippers were coming in and buying these places and putting a coat of paint on it and then selling it to some poor unsuspecting soul who got in there and found that the plumbing and electrical and everything was all bad. And then they walked away from it. So you got the empty house again. So we had that. And then you had the houses that were so bad that it was really impossible for anybody of normal means to repair it. So the building had to be brought up to code by the existing owner before it could be sold. Well, with the, with the ones in those category twos, we developed a program where if you wanted to buy one of those, you had to put up enough of a bond to guarantee the fact that you could pay for the necessary repairs. And the other ones, the worst of the worst, was you, you cannot sell that place under any circumstances until the thing is brought up to code. But most of them by that time are bank-owned those because if they, the folks walked away, they trashed them. They were a mess. And the banking industry wasn't one bit happy about that because they wanted to dump them. They didn't wanna fix them. And they said, Dan, how, you know, we're bankers. We don't, we don't fix buildings and stuff like that. I said, well, you know, if you're gonna build a new drive-through here, what do you do? Do you send the tellers out to lay up the mortar blocks and do all that stuff with them? Turn them into carpenters? Well, no, of course we'd hire, hire a contractor. Huh. How about some of the properties that you own out there? Hire a contractor, get them fixed up? Well, the, the end of the story is, is that in most cases, the banks demoed them. They just got, they demoed them. And in a few cases, if there was something, some, we're putting more money after that in, they'd fix it up. But the ones in the middle, those were the ones that we salvaged those. But it was by the fact that the seller had to reduce the price enough that a buyer who knew their business and knew what it would take to fix it, could do it economically and, and have a product that they could either sell or rent and make, and make the, the finances work on that. But it, it changed the whole thing. We went at one time in St. Paul to having over 2,400 vacant and abandoned buildings.
Right.
And normally what we used to have, there's always gonna be some, but it was between 300 and 400. But it took us a year to get that number down. And we got the number down to like 600, which I considered compared to where we started from and continuing to chip away with was, that was a big deal that really saved our neighborhoods.
I've had two thoughts. Hearing him share stories like that makes me think, you know, we're here and we're concerned about a presidential election. We're concerned about issues like abortion and war and funding and all these kinda things. But really what your vote can do on the local level to serve and meet the needs of the people in your neighborhood, that vote that you can put in for city council members, local representatives and things like that, that's gonna make a big impact just on your immediate community. And so we'll talk about that in a few weeks, what that looks like. But voting at a local level is essential and very important. The other thing that I thought of was, I preached a few weeks ago and I said a pretty radical thing, that government was, exists for our good from God. And I think this is an example of godly politicians who are in a position where like, if anybody's seen the movie Money Pit, like I just had that in my mind, you know, like someone, you know, fix a creaky step or put some paint up or whatever, but once you move in and you turn on the faucets, you got goop coming out and, you know, bathtubs falling through the floor and all those kinda things. But yeah, what was to stop people from doing that and the same thing would be used cars, all those kinda things, it's the same deal. We need those regulations. It's for our good. And how much more so when you're talking about a place that's somebody's home, right? So just those two things came to mind. I'm gonna make you uncomfortable maybe for a second. I'm gonna try. Your platform when you ran for office, I don't have the sign with me, but it had a, an endorsement on it from a major political party. Who, who are you endorsed by when you ran for office in city council?
DFL. DFL.
And that stands for?
Democratic Farmer Lever. And your point is?
He's a Democrat. Get him. Yeah. Would you say that the DFL has changed at all since the time you were in, you were in office?
That's an understa-, that's an understatement. I had a, you know, one of the former mayors in St. Paul was George Latimer. And George just recently passed away and I, I really liked George. He was mayor for 16 years and for all the years I was, he was mayor, I was on the police department during that period of time. So I, I knew him. And he was mayor while I was on the board of education and we got to know each other and to be good friends. And one of the things, I, I went to visit him at Presbyterian Homes here a year or two ago and we got chatting about exactly that same subject. And I don't know that George or I had really changed, but the party has changed. It's like he said, he said, Danny, there isn't a chance that you or I could be endorsed by that party today under any circumstances. You know, I was the last openly pro-life person on the council. And I, I wore that proudly and I knew what I was dealing with, with my colleagues. But nevertheless, they knew exactly where I stood on these issues. And, you know, nobody ever gave me a hassle over it either. And I, I had a lot of friends in organized labor in St. Paul, the building trades particularly, the bricklayers, the plumbers, the pipe fitters, electricians, great, great bunch of people. Pipe fitters have a deal where every fall they go out and the pipe fitters union and the plumbing contractors association, and they have a little program they call Heat Sign, where they, they go out and they, in low-income neighborhoods and for low-income families, and they'll fix furnaces and water heaters and do all these, these kinds of things. So I go to their breakfast meeting that they have somewhere at seven o'clock on a Saturday morning, which is the last thing I really wanted to do at seven o'clock on a Saturday morning after a long week. But anyway, to, to give these guys a little shout and a thank you for it. And the great thing about them, whenever they started their breakfast meeting, there, there was always somebody in that group that was a, just an outspoken, committed Christian that led in prayer. And I, I was impressed. And then the last thing they did before they adjourned is they gave away a shotgun.
The second most Christian thing you could do, I suppose.
And I said to them, anybody that starts with an opening prayer and quits with giving away a shotgun, that's my kind of people.
I hadn't heard that story. I didn't, oh yeah. Times have changed. I don't think they're doing that anymore.
They certainly have.
Yeah.
You know, I just, you know, one of the things obviously that, that really made me was growing up in a Christian family home and a mother was just a saint and a father worked his tail off at the 3M company for years and years and years. And I, I got this job on the police department, never having any idea what it was going to be. But the things that we saw and what that did to me, I think, was really quite remarkable. Because of handling these medical emergencies, I'll never forget the time one Sunday morning, we got a call to see a, to see a man. And every time you get a call to see a man, you don't have any idea what you're gonna, what you're gonna get into. And we arrived and this guy said, you know, my father hasn't been seen for, you know, a week or so and we, we think he's in the house there and he, the newspapers have piled up on the front stoop and, you know, I don't wanna break the glass and go in, but if you guys wanna break the window so we can go in and, or no, no, we don't want you to break the window. That was the deal. We don't want you to break the window. I'll, I'll call a locksmith and have them come out and do this. Well, we walked around the house and looked in the window and lo and behold, you could see some legs sticking out from behind a couch. And it didn't feel right to me, knowing that, that we should stick around and wait for a locksmith. And so we called our, our commander and told them what we had and they said, if, if you can see legs, you break the window, you go in there and find out what's going on. We did. And we got in there and here this poor old soul is laying on the floor and he's alive. And by the number of newspapers on the front stoop, there must have been three or four days worth. And I got to thinking, this guy was, he could hear. He knew we were there. He couldn't talk, but he heard that newspaper come and hit that door every day and there wasn't a thing that he could do about it. Well, we brought the stretcher in and rolled the fellow over and put him on the stretcher and we're just gonna take him out. And the tears again came down. He, he knew we were there. And you know, he couldn't, the only thing he could say was, door, the door, the door, the door. That was it. He could say nothing else. But he knew we were there and said, Dad, we're here to take care of you. It was those little things that, that leave an impression on you that, you know, you wonder sometimes, are you making any kind of an impact? We had a call, another call, I'll just share a couple of stories here, where this young, we, we got a call on a child who had his bike stolen. So we went over to take the stolen bike report. You take a dozen of these a week, so it's not a particularly big deal. And we wrote the report, getting ready to go, and the child's father says, you know, I'm just looking at you. You don't take this very seriously. While every incident is serious to people, well, you don't seem to be taken this seriously at all. And I said, sir, can I just have your attention for just a minute and tell you something? We just came from a call two hours ago. There was a youngster about the size of your lad. They were playing ball out in the front of their house. The ball bounced and it got, it bounced into one of those flower boxes, you know, that they had on the front of the old houses. And there's a couple of boards there that stick out that hold these things on. And these things are filled with dirt and they've got flowers in it. So the kid ran, grabbed a hold of the flower box and the box tipped over, fell and crushed the kid and killed him. And I told this guy how that happened and I said, sir, you have your son. Consider yourself extremely fortunate. And you know, until you put some of that stuff in perspective, some of these little minor problems, you know, they're, they're big deals to us if it's happening to you. But in the overall scope of things, some of this stuff really doesn't make much difference at all.
I think that's a great example and I think that carries over into not just policing, but into your political career as well. You know, you could have someone picketing over, you know, some things that you would say, this is not a real issue happening right now, but to them it is. And I think that's a, not just a political or a police life lesson, but I think a lesson for everyone. Whatever's right in front of you is the biggest issue that you're facing. And so to kinda widen your perspective. We typically don't willingly want to do that, but when you're in those positions, it happens to you whether you're wanted to or not. So maybe just a word of advice as well, when you're talking to a police officer or something like that, you don't know where they just came from. And my father was a police officer as well for a number of years and, and he would tell similar stories like, you know, I just, I just had to take someone down who committed suicide in their living room and then my next call is, my neighbor broke my scooter or something like that and you're not taking this seriously enough. And, you know, you're writing the report and you're like, yes, sir, thank you, you know, and then you're supposed to go home. Go home and go home with that and then not bring it up to your family. So maybe we could have a whole nother talk about, about what police go through. And by the way, since your time as a police officer, it has not gotten better in the way that they're treated, I would say. But I, I, we only have 10 minutes, so I'm sorry. We'll have to have you back. I wanted to ask a question about, we, we talked about something called the two-story view, which is basically the upper levels where you can pray and have your faith and have your religion and your beliefs, but the lower level where the kitchen is and the dining room is where you gotta leave that upstairs and now we're in a common place, similar to like a private home to the public square. Don't bring your religious morals into that council room, right? What was your experience like that, being a Christian in the city council insofar as your faith was concerned? Did you ever have to, or were you ever in a position where you were expected to leave your beliefs at the door and, and policy make in that way?
I never experienced anything like that, no. Because I never, ever considered that. I was who I was and my colleagues all knew who I was. So there was no surprises or anything. Because they'd occasionally tell me, Dan, I don't think you can support this. And I would say, you're absolutely right. And, but I'm not, you know, gonna make a gigantic deal out of it because I know I'm ultimately gonna lose the vote anyway. So you pick, pick your battles carefully because there's a lot of stuff worth fighting for, but very, very little worth dying for. You know, I, this whole business of law enforcement today is really something. I have, over the years, watched Blue Bloods quite religiously. He goes, religiously. Of course, I told my wife, she says, why do you wanna watch them? I get continuing education credits for watching it. But the, the thing about all of this stuff is, and what people don't realize and what I learned over the years, and this is something that we got a lot of people here that are close to my age and not many of you are my age, but it, it's all, it's all about reaction time in how things happen. When I worked in the accident division in the police department, I found that it- When I worked in the accident division in the police department, I found that at eighty-eight, at, at sixty miles an hour, a car is traveling eighty-eight feet per second. And so, to kind of get that in perspective, but, but a person doesn't realize, if something happens in front of you, you have a, you say, "Well, I got eighty-eight feet per second, I can get my foot on the brake." Well, if you get, to get your foot on the brake, your car has traveled sixty-six feet before you ever get your foot on the brake, and then it's gonna take another hundred and ten feet to stop. Okay? And so, reaction time is three-quarters of a second. And this is where I go back to Blue Bloods. There was, there was one of the, one of the programs where the Danny, the young, uh, son, uh, was being chastised because he shot some fellow. And they, they didn't know if this guy was, was armed or not. I'll, I'll demonstrate here. So, he, his demonstration was, he's standing in front of the jury, and he's, he is now the bad guy. And he's got his hand behind his back. And he says to one of the, one of the people on the juror, jury, "Tell me to show me your hands." So, just say to me, "Show me your hands."
Show me your hands.
Come on.
Show me your hands. Show me your hands.
Okay, but further, do, okay, stand up. Okay. Over here.
Audience participation.
Now, to do that, you gotta have a, because you're the cop.
Yeah.
And, and I'm the perp. Now, hold your gun out, you got your gun out. Point it at me because you don't know what I'm gonna do. And, okay, show me.
Show me your hands.
Bang!
Yeah. You don't have time.
Before, he's holding a gun in his hand, I pull one out from behind my back and shoot him, and he never knew what hit him. And that's how fast this stuff happens. I was, I was at a send-off for the Red Bulls when they were gonna go over to Iraq many, many years ago. And there were about three thousand of them down at the auditorium getting ready to go. And, uh, they were all excited and ready to go. And one of the women, that was another elected official, uh, we were walking out, and she said to me, "Dan, I don't understand it. You know, these guys are gonna go, they could be gone for a year, they're could be in harm's way, they could be gone for two years, and they're excited, they're ready to go." I said, "I don't get it." She said, "You know, there is something unique about the military service, the fire service, and the police service." And I'll explain it this way. If I'm a cop and I'm dispatched to a domestic, and I have to go down this long hundred-foot hall of this old dilapidated apartment building, only lit by one forty-watt bulb, and that door is way down at the end that I have to go to for this domestic, and I have to walk past four or five doors on my way down there, not knowing what's gonna come out from one of those doors. And I have a partner behind me, I never have to look behind me because I know that my back is covered and I'm never gonna be attacked from behind. But if I was walking down that hall with a politician, my head would be spinning like a polarizer.
I told him, uh, I told him Scott Renstrom's definition of, uh, of politics. Poly, poly being the blood-sucking creature and ticks, or, uh, poly being many and ticks being blood-sucking creature. Not you, not you. Uh, we just have a couple minutes left. Uh, I wanted to ask your advice. What can everyday, hard-working Christians do to impact their neighborhoods and communities for Christ through politics? And the point of this, or that core objective here, what we've been doing is to say that we want to engage. We don't wanna create our own separatist community and just be monks in a monastery. We want to engage and we wanna be involved. And, um, so what advice would you give, um, for just everyday, normal people? Voting, obviously, being important. What else would you say as far as getting involved and, and having a Christian influence?
Well, in Minne, in Minnesota, where all this stuff starts, is at the local precinct caucus. And if you don't show up for the caucus and you don't caucus, your voice is not going to be heard. It's, it's that simple. And if you can get like-minded folks, neighbors, friends to attend, and it's all in who you endorse and who those candidates endorse, uh, for office. And it's, it's those that doesn't, or maybe it's, uh, a precinct caucus, they have fifteen or twenty people in it, and you got ten rooms with this like amount. But those people determine who is going to be on the ballot. It's such a small number of folks that do it, that it's actually, it's a doable thing.
You might be out of battery on here.
It, it's a doable thing if people are willing to get their neighbors together and get out and do it. But in real-life politics in Minnesota, that's where it all starts.
I did some caucusing, I think. Well, the first time, uh, I don't know, the first time I was involved, I was trying to help him out to get re-elected. I'm not sure how many years you'd already been in city council, but, um, we were canvassing, going through neighborhoods to hand out literature. So, you had these printed cards, you know, maybe just small half-sheet of paper, but they had who he was, what he was running for, what his, you know, policies were gonna be if he got elected or re-elected. And so, we're supposed to drop off these cards at all these houses, but the adults didn't tell me was that you're only supposed to leave one at each house. So, I had a stack. I don't know if, yeah, I haven't told you this. Too embarrassed. I had a, I had a stack and it was, had a rubber bind, there had to be a hundred cards in there. The adults just gave me the stack, said, "Okay, go ahead." And then they walked the other direction, and I was supposed to go the other way, up and down the street handing out. And I just took the stack and set him down at a house and went and caught up with the group. And I said, "I'm done." And they were like, "What are you talking about? You're done? We gave you a huge stack." I was like, "Yeah, well, you told me to put them in the house." So, I did, and they're like, "Oh, no." So, they ran back to try and see. And whoever lived at that house had already taken the literature. So, he did win reelection that year. Hopefully, he was an ally inside that house and they took it upon themselves to canvas the rest of the neighborhood. But I was not very helpful that election, uh, for you, so that's my admission.
It worked, it worked.
Yeah. Yeah, one other thing I was gonna say as far as caucusing, um, it depends on where you live, so what county you're in, what city you're in, all of those kind of things. So, uh, maybe I can give you more information on that as we get closer to, um, election season? 'Cause it's the same time, right, for, for everyone in November? So, I'll help with that. Um, but when you think about what your vote counts for, you know, in a presidential race, particularly in Minnesota, I get really discouraged. Because I feel like my vote, in a lot of ways, at least for the last, what, fifty-four years, I think, I think it's been a waste almost, you know, to think about it kind of, you know, in a depressing kind of way. It hasn't gone anywhere. It's gone, it's gone away from the party that I would have supported. But when you think about how much value your vote is, if you're involved in caucusing, we're talking like thirty people, fifty people, rather than a vote of how many people are in Minnesota even, I don't know, eight million, ten million, something like that? Maybe less. But anyways, so you think one in, in six million or eight million versus one in thirty? And imagine if there's five or ten of you that are all in the same district or the same area, and you come together to make your voice be heard. We're talking about a thirty percent ratio of you filling out that room and your voice being heard and having that kind of impact on the community that you wanna see. And what, what you will see, what you have seen in some of these, um, places like Moscow, Idaho, is you see politicians running to churches to beg for support, rather than churches running or, or begging for politicians to do what they want them to do. And so, I think that's a big impact that we can have immediately, coming up in the next few weeks, is to be involved, um, and get some good people on the ballot, but then also, um, make sure that they're receiving the support. Yes?
Yeah, just for your information, the caucuses occur in the springtime, you think February, March is time of the week?
Okay. Yeah. So, maybe it's too late this time around? Who's on the ballot's gonna be who's on the ballot, right? But yeah, we can revisit that. It's ten oh-three, I wanted to have time for questions. One of, this microphone's dead. Could, maybe we, would you be okay with another seven minutes? Is that okay? Six minutes and thirty seconds? Okay, all right. Uh, any questions that you have for, um, Dan Bostrom? I can, I can come find you with the mic.
I think we would all acknowledge, the journey's fast, the journey's late. My question to you at this time, uh, within this area, what could and should Christians do that maybe we haven't done before in this type of an election?
You mean presidential election?
There really, there really aren't any options. You either vote or you don't vote. And even if you vote and your candidate doesn't win, to make sure that that candidate is well-supported so perhaps the next time around, they get it. I ran for office three times and lost. Twice for the state house, I said, once, but lost by fifteen hundred votes. Then lost the second time by fifty-six votes to a guy by the name of Bruce Minto, who went on, went on to be a, a US representative. And then I ran for the Board of Education and lost. And then I ran for the Board of Education and won, and won the next nine elections that I was involved in. But it's one of those things is that it's fits and starts, and if a person ever decides to get involved in something like that, it doesn't pay off, uh, the first time, try it again. Or if you, if you see or you know somebody out there that you really think has a possibility to be a great candidate, get behind him and support him and do the, the literature dropping, you know.
Not like I did, but, yeah.
And it, and it, again, the dirty little secret about the thing is, it takes money. And if you've got somebody out there that you really like, that you think they're able to do a job, slip a couple of dollars to their campaign and help them because all this stuff that you do costs money.
Great.
Is it okay to put in a plug for something that's coming up?
Yeah.
In District Forty-One, my husband and I do a lot of literature drops, but if anybody's interested-